Radio Free Santa Clarita presents. The Talk of Santa Clarita. A podcast about issues involving Santa Clarita and the surrounding valley. With your host, Stephen Daniels. Episode 160, Candidate for Hart District School Board, James Webb. And now, let's see what the talk of Santa Clarita is.
And remember, this is for posterity, so be honest.
James Webb, Jim Webb, or is it Jim Webb or James Webb?
It's James Webb.
James Webb. Is there, is, um, is there like a famous actor or something like that with that same name?
There was actually a senator from Virginia, and there's also a telescope named the James Webb Telescope.
Are you responsible for either one?
I am not, but I wouldn't be sad if I had the residuals from either, either one.
Okay, okay. Uh, so let's, uh, let's, uh, first of all, you're running for school board, Hart School District, Area 4. Who are you, who are you running against?
I'm running against the incumbent, Steve Sturgeon.
Steve Sturgeon, friend of the show, had him on once, um, a while back, actually, last time he was running. So, um, let's, let's talk a little bit about you, so people can get to know you as a person.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, where are you from originally?
I'm from Tampa, Florida originally.
Tampa, Florida, one of the crazy Florida people, huh?
Well, Tampa's become a little bit more, less crazy.
And how did you end up in Santa Clarita?
I ended up in Santa Clarita because my husband was accepted into the MFA program at Cal Arts.
Good program.
And I interviewed for a job at Saugus High School and was hired. And he started the MFA program at Cal Arts, and I began my first year teaching in California at Saugus High School.
Did he time the marriage at a time just, just, just right, so you would be partially responsible for the student loans?
Well, you know what? We were very, you know, that's, that's interesting. We were very fortunate. We weren't married at the time, because of course, it was not, uh, recognized. Yeah, it was not legally recognized, but his family, his father, uh, paid for his master's program. So he was very, yes, very, very fortunate to have that.
I still have the monkey on my back of student loans from 20 years ago.
Oh, yeah. It's very expensive school, very great school, but very expensive.
Where did you go to college at?
I went to Florida State University.
Uh, in the 90s, 80s?
It was in the 90s. I graduated with my bachelor's.
Florida State University in, in the 90s, didn't they have that Keller, the guy, wasn't there a serial killer at Florida State University?
That was actually in 1978. That was Ted Bundy.
No, 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 no. There was, there was one in the 90s.
Oh, yes, that's right. But he did more damage at the University of Florida.
Okay.
Uh, Danny something, I can't remember his last name, but no, that was at the University of Florida in Gainesville.
That's awesome.
Uh, no, not, not quite. We do not confuse the Gators and the Seminoles.
Okay, okay. Forgive me, forgive me. Uh, and what, what did you study?
I studied, uh, English literature for my bachelor's, and then English education with an emphasis in curriculum and instruction for my master's.
Did you always want to be a teacher?
No, actually, I didn't.
What did you want to do initially?
I, I thought I wanted to be a doctor, but, um, my first, uh, class in college was chemistry. And then I took physics, and I heard the language of physics is math, and I said, that's a language I don't speak, so I was out.
See, I had a similar experience with, with chemistry. Chemistry, just sort of like, I went, okay, uh, you know, proton, neutron, electron. That's all I need to know. I don't want to know anymore. And then they kept going with dipole movement, and this, and this, and then I went, eh, this is not for me.
Right.
So, um, so, and, but you decided to move into teaching itself. What was the moment, the earth-shattering moment that you said, I want to be a teacher?
It was when I was working for an after-school program in Tallahassee, where I was going to college. And I worked with students, and just the infectious nature of working with kids and their energy and their passion is really what was the moment that got me hooked.
Got a puppy coming by.
Yeah. Well, hey, that's great about live shows.
Yeah. So, and, and then you just said, this is what you want to do.
I did. I said, this is what I want to do. I loved English, and so I had the epiphany that I love, you know, writing and literature. And I enjoyed working with kids, so I brought them together and found my passion.
Which, uh, who's your favorite writer?
Favorite writer is Oscar Wilde. I like his wit, uh, his sarcasm, his use of language and imagery to really portray a lot of emotions that many human beings feel. I felt that he captured that, especially in the 19th century England.
Okay, okay. You know, I actually, uh, I, I think my, my first degree at, at college was for English Lit 2, so I should know that.
We all have special, you know, we, we specialize in certain things.
If you saw my grades at the time, dude, you'd go, well, okay, well, I'll give you a pass on that. So, um, so how did you, your, your, your husband came out and, and to do the Cal Arts thing, and what's he do now?
He is actually the video production teacher at Castaic High School. He was on the opening leadership team. So he opened Castaic as the Practical Arts Department Chair and the Video Production Teacher.
Okay, okay. And, and you're still teaching right now, or are you?
I'm actually working for the Commission on Teacher Credentialing. Uh, I work here in Santa Clarita. But, uh, of course, that's based in Sacramento, but I am a consultant with teacher preparation now.
What, what is that, what do you do exactly?
So I work to advise preliminary programs around the state, as well as, um, other graduate programs with regard to preliminary teaching credentials and admin teaching credentials. Making sure their coursework supports what effective teaching is going to look like in the classroom.
Like a national board certification program?
Um, yes, but maybe more on a state level, on a state level. Um, there's a certain set of program standards that every program must follow, uh, in terms of their accreditation with the state.
Okay, okay. Uh, why, why did you quit teaching?
Um, I, well, actually, I didn't want to quit teaching. If, I, I've got to be honest with you. If the governor said, I'm eliminating this, these positions, I would go back to the classroom in a heartbeat. I love it. But what happened is I became very heavily involved with mentoring new teachers. And so that's what, uh, called me out of the classroom. Uh, but what I found is that the impact that I had with students grew as I worked with new teachers.
Okay. Um, I'm intrigued. Uh, one of the things, um, when I was reading your bio, you, you talked about openly about the fact that you had your husband and everything like that. And that you dealt with the fact that, uh, marriage wasn't legally recognized out here for a while.
Right.
Um, is, I, I, I'm just curious. First of all, you know, it's, when, when did you come out exactly? Were you younger?
No, I was, I was actually older.
You were older?
I was 20, about 26.
26?
When I came out.
So you're about the 90s, around the 90s.
Correct.
Was it difficult to do?
It was, because growing up in Florida, very conservative state, um, my parents.
That's what I wondered about.
Right. Um, and I, you know, I felt this duty to, um, you know, have my parents have the, um, impression that, you know, everything was fine. It was, you know, because that's what the South is. It's a portrayal of what is really not going on inside the homes. And so, yes, it was very challenging. And, um, but also very liberating. My family was very supportive, my sister, my brother. My mom, it took her a little while, but my father was the one that really was so supportive of me. And what was ironic is, he was, he's a military man, uh, Air Force, grew up in Alabama. And so to have his support really was, he really showed me what unconditional love is.
Did, there is the, um, I, I've seen it a couple of times in, in movies and stuff like that. Or, or situations where, uh, a friend might come out and you go, some people go, yeah, we kind of already knew. I mean, what, what, did you experience that, or did you, or were people totally surprised and shocked, or?
More of my friends, my professional friends were surprised. My sister, her, her reaction was, yes, I've known ever since you were two. And I said, well, you could have clued me in, you know, and maybe we could, I could.
Let me know these things.
Yes, I could have saved some years. Uh, but, you know, my journey in, in feeling comfortable with who I am, I wouldn't take it back for anything, because it really, I think, made me into the person I am.
Yeah. Did you, as a teacher, um, particularly in the South, I mean, you, you didn't teach out in the South, did you?
I did. I taught for a few years in Florida.
Was that an issue ever? I mean, the, your, your, your sexuality, I mean, was it, uh, because, I mean, there are areas where they go, well, he can't teach, or they can't teach, because they're gay, you know? I mean, you know, is that, was that ever an issue, or?
At the time, uh, there were still laws in Florida that restricted a openly gay teacher in terms of, uh, being in the classroom. Um, I never talked about it. I never brought it up. Um, it was something that I just buried deep. Uh, and I just, because I myself wasn't ready.
Yeah.
To have that conversation.
Well, how do you feel about talking about it now?
Oh, I feel very comfortable now. Um, but part of that has been coming to California and, uh, feeling that I live in a place that values who I am as a human being, regardless of my sexual orientation.
We are talking about Santa Clarita, right?
We are. It's come a ways. But remember, uh, we are licensed by the state of California. And many of the rules in EDCO govern what it is that we, uh, do in the school system.
Is, uh, where'd you meet Charles? Is, Charles is your husband, right?
Yes, Charles is my husband. I met him in Florida. We actually met at Walt Disney World. Uh, we were working.
You're a Disney fan, aren't you?
Yeah, oh, very, very big Disney fan. Uh, I was working at the Magic Kingdom, and he was working at Epcot.
What were you doing at the Magic Kingdom?
I, funny. I was running Space Mountain.
Were you?
So I was one of the ride operators for, for the mountain, we used to call it.
For the ma, the, the, the lingo, the Disney lingo.
Yes, the Disney lingo, yes.
Is, does, uh, if you're a big Disney fan, does it destroy the myth a little bit to work for Disney? Because, I mean, I've, I've seen the reports about how the whole place is built above, and like, there's a whole underground layer. Underneath it, people ride carts around to get around.
That is true. Except not at Space Mountain. Space Mountain is the only one that's not.
Oh, really?
Part of the utilitors. That's what they call them.
Utilitors?
Yes.
Is, I mean, but does that blow up the myth a little bit? I mean, you know?
No, you know, not really. I actually, one of the things that's intrigued me about Disney ever since I was a kid was just how does everything work?
Yeah.
And so now I know how it works, but I appreciate it. And, um, it actually was great talking points with my students in the classroom, uh, because they would often ask me about it. So they, they loved to know how it works as well.
Yeah, well, I, I've always, Disney World in particular fascinates me just because of, of the pre-production that was done. It's sort of like, uh, Disney himself went, okay, here's what we did in Disneyland, here's what we needed to do. Let's do it in Disney World now.
Right.
And, and, and one of the things that always, this is why I would never work there. Is because I love the fact that you park, and it seems like you're 10 miles from the park. And then, and then you've got to take a boat or a monorail to get to the actual park itself. It is like literally you disappear into another world.
That is correct.
And if I know about the underground layers, or I've seen the underground layers and everything else, it just destroys it for me, so.
No, I, I, I get that. And, uh, you know, it, but at the same time, it's just fascinating how they're able to, you know, get everything, uh, and really help make the magic happen.
Are you a Scrooge McDuck fan?
Um, no, I'm more of the Huey Doohickey and Louie fan. I do.
Out. Get out. We're already out.
Right. But I do see Donald Duck there.
No, this is Howard the Duck.
Oh, Howard the Duck, apologize.
Yeah, get them right. Although they're both Disney now.
Yes, there you go.
So, no, I'm a big Scrooge McDuck fan, personally. So, but, uh, did you read the comics, uh, as a kid?
Um, not really, no, no.
No, we have nothing in common though.
Okay.
What are we going to talk about now? Um, let's talk about, uh, have you, have you ever run for, for an office before in your life?
Uh, the only offices that I've ever run would be for some, you know, very, very minor local, like an HOA. Or, um, I go to church at St. Stevens. I've run for the Vestry and, uh, was appointed to that and was also an HOA board member as well.
Okay. So this is your first time to, like?
In a very large, much larger arena, yes.
Is, um, what motivated you to run?
What motivated me to run was I, having been a teacher in the Hart District, have, you know, have really seen the way, uh, the communities evolve, but the school board doesn't seem to be in tandem with the community's, uh, movement. And I think that we need to bring more minds together that have been in education, have been in the trenches, so to speak, to come together and make the best informed decisions about children.
Okay. So basically, the fact that you're a teacher?
Right, right, exactly.
What are some of your objectives as far as, uh, being on the, the school board? I mean, what, what, what's missing right now that they're not doing right?
One of the things that's missing is that the board likes to talk about, you know, all of these accolades and these awards that are, that are very important, but it, they need to look deeper. They need to look at really where are the needs of students? Students who have disabilities, students who are English learners, homeless stu, uh, students who are homeless or who are foster youth. Because when you start digging down and peeling the layers of the onion, you find that we're not serving them. And every child, according to the Constitution of California, is entitled to a free and public education.
Is the homeless situation for kids in Hart School District that big?
We have, it's approximately 12 to 15%. A lot of the, yes. Um, if, if you look at what.
How is that possible if there's only about 1,000 homeless in Santa Clarita?
Well, you have to look at what the federal and state definition of homelessness is. So it's, if you have a family living in a hotel, or a motel, um, or living with other families together in one home, that is, that fits the federal and state guidelines for homelessness.
Okay. Well, I mean, but, okay, but then the, the report I'd always heard, the last count, uh, for, for homeless in this area was like 300 to 500, or somewhere around there, and then you usually triple that, and it comes up to about 1,000 people.
Right, right.
So I'm, I'm surprised by the, that it would be that high of a ratio, or high, high number of, um, of people that are homeless. Kids that are homeless. That's horrible.
Right. And if we are looking at the way that they are defined and tracked, the number could even be higher.
Yeah.
Uh, because again, this is self-reporting. So we have a lot of families that are not reporting, and so.
Well, I mean, what do you do about that? I mean, it's not like, you know, Hart School Board can give them a home, or anything like that.
No, but I think what we have to look at is, uh, address things such as institutional bias. What are we doing to ensure, and even now with the, uh, distance learning, how are we ensuring that they have access to technology? How are we making sure that students, uh, don't, you know, families don't have to choose between paying grocery bills and paying for the internet? And one of, you know, there's technological things that can occur that need to be strengthened with regard to hotspots and other ways to give students resources that they need. Another thing is requiring students to buy books or to buy materials. Again, providing that, uh, to them, so again, those choices don't have to be made, uh, for families in the, in the valley.
Okay. And I'm curious about, I mean, let's see, I mean, beyond that, I mean, talk to me a little bit more about like the other needs of the students that, uh.
So I, if we look at the, also the students with disabilities and students who are English language learners, those are, uh, groups of students who need to have equal access to the curriculum with supports in place. And what the district has not done effectively with students with disabilities is providing them the least restrictive environment to have them be with their general education peers and give them access to materials that their gen ed peers have. And so one of the things that I am also, uh, having as part of my platform is to make sure that our, um, distribution of resources are equitably distributed. Because I taught at West Ranch High School, as well as Saugus. But I will be honest, that if you go to other schools, you will not see the same level of computers or other materials that all schools in our valley should have.
Yeah.
And it shouldn't be restricted to, uh, money, excuse me, uh, and what stu, uh, families can provide. But it's really what resources can we access at the state level, possibly the federal level, that supplements what it is that we are receiving from the state in terms of the budget.
Okay. Um, why is that though? I mean, why would, uh, one school have nicer computers than say, the other school? Why, why is that?
Well, sometimes it's a matter of timing, the way that computers come in and out, uh, the way that they're recycled. Another time, it's the, um, the programs that the school may offer. If one school has access to something, uh, that they are able to offer than another school, then they may get those, um, funds available, and they may be able to offer those programs. But one of the things that I have seen is working with the state, there are so many grants that are provided by the California Department of Education that are not being applied for.
Yeah.
And we need to really, uh, put together a task force to really look at these grant programs to bring them to our district.
What is your current, or what is your opinion on the current board in general? Do you feel that they're doing a good job as a whole, or do they, are there, do you think that they've made some major mistakes or anything like that? I mean, one of the big controversies for a long time was the amount of time it was taking to Castaic High School to open. You know, what are your thoughts on that? I mean, is, not that, yeah, actually, I'm pinning you down a little bit here, but, uh, you know, is, is there something that they've been doing wrong, or, or that sticks out in your head?
I think that it wasn't a priority. I think it became a priority in an election year, back in 2015.
Yeah.
And I think that it was something that, um, as we saw Castaic continuing to grow, that it was something that could be used to leverage some votes.
Yeah.
I do, however, don't think that it was, um, put in the consciousness that it should have. Um, if we look at West Ranch in Golden Valley, um, they opened at a time when Castaic was still on the drawing board. But Castaic had been on the drawing board far beyond West Ranch and Golden Valley. Don't get me wrong, I taught at West Ranch, so of course, it's near and dear to my heart. But you have a community that was, people were moving in for, for that, uh, purpose. I think what does make me a little disappointed is posters that say, Castaic High School delivered us promise. It's a promise that's 23 years old.
Right.
It was also, um, you know, if you look at the construction and the budget, you know, there's some misinformation about the, it being on budget. It was actually almost $12 million over budget.
Yeah.
It was the fifth most expensive high school to be built in the state of California. So, again, you know, knowing things that are there, I think that there should have been a little bit more supervision, a little bit more, uh, involvement with regard to the way that it was, uh, seen and, you know, run, to make sure that the citizens of Castaic got a high school that they could be proud of and that they deserved.
Okay. The, um, um, I'm stumbling because the cars are distracting me this morning, and the bugs are eating me alive. Did you wear long pants? I can't.
No, I have shorts on, but, but I'm, I'm from Florida, remember? I'm used to bugs.
This is normal to you.
Exactly.
Okay, this is, all right. Um, the, uh, do you think that the, as far as the, the goals of the school district, the school board should be for, primarily for college prep for the students?
No.
Okay.
I, I think that we need to have something for all students. And we need to have multiple pathways to help them, uh, realize what their, um, what their potential is.
What kind of pathways? What are you talking about?
Well, I mean, uh, I look at things like, uh, pathways, you know, of course, for college. We also have a rich and robust career and technical education program that, uh, was started and is continuing to build momentum. But I also think that we need to think about, uh, certain other pathways, such as vocational, technical, uh, you know, for students that may want to pursue, you know, other avenues that may not fall into those other things. I think that what we need to realize, we're not graduating, uh, students to have an assembly line of get them in, get them out, which is the old, you know, Henry Ford model of education. But that we have to produce citizens for the community, because most of the students stay in this area. They stay in Santa Clarita. So we are really investing in our community by providing them with resources, pipelines, and other avenues to help them be successful. But we have to make them available to them.
Such as like vocational training, or?
Vocational training, I think, partnering more, uh, you know, with COC, College of the Canyons. Also looking at some other, we, we've been exploring the idea, uh, it's been talked about with, uh, creating pipelines for education, for example. Finding students in high school and, uh, having them get involved with residency programs or with other programs to help them pursue their passion to become a teacher. And, um, I, I know that when I was that age, 17, I didn't know what I wanted. I, I knew I wanted to be out of the house, but I didn't know where I wanted to be. And, uh, you know, sometimes having those resources available really helps students to get focused.
Or even more, I would even say that, uh, because for like me, I knew what I wanted to do when I was 17. But there was nobody to kind of point me in the direction of how to do it, you know what I mean? And I think that hampered me quite a bit in college, because I didn't really know the avenues as, as far as where to go or how to become, you know, the, what, what I wanted to do in life, you know what I mean?
Right, right.
So I guess, you know, like more counseling, more, more.
I, well, I think we, uh, need to look at the structuring of our counseling. I think we need to, uh, because another thing about my, uh, platform that you asked me, some of my visions, is about social emotional learning. I think we need to, uh, empower our counselors to provide more, uh, services to give students a place to talk, a place to, uh, go and receive counseling, but know that counseling also could, um, be expanded to look at these opportunities of which are, of, of which you're referring to, which would be very important as well.
I, I, have you, have you been to many board meetings?
Yes.
Are you familiar, are you familiar with the board?
I have presented to the board several times.
For what, exactly?
When I was the induction director for the Hart Induction Program, I would give an annual report of the PAR program and the Teacher Induction Program.
Oh, okay, okay. So you're familiar with the board members?
Yes, I am.
As a gay man, what do you think about Joe Messina? That is an awkward way to put it, but, uh, Joe's a friend of the show.
Right, right.
But, uh, but obviously, he's.
Let me tell you, with, I think one thing that Joe Messina did very, very positively that the district needed was, he really was a proponent of the CTE, or the Career and Technical Education Program.
Yeah, and I give him credit.
I, I think that he put that into, uh, conversations that were lacking. And I'm really excited with what he started there.
Yeah.
However, things that are said that are not, uh, you know, at board meetings, I mean, he does have a right to his own free speech. But as we know, when you take on a role, uh, whether it's even as a teacher, um, you represent, by, whether you think it's right or not, you represent that institution that you are affiliated with. There's a saying in teaching that perception is reality, and it's very true in education. And when you are speaking about things that are quite controversial and could hurt other people, people are going to equate it to the board and say, the board is speaking.
So you're saying when he says something that's anti-LBT?
LGBTQ plus.
You know what? They need a better acronym. I always have trouble remembering the order of that, excuse me.
I understand.
Please, I apologize. Uh, but, uh, but I mean, it's, you're saying it's not helpful if he's just saying it on his radio show, or whatever.
I, I think it's not helpful, because there are many children in the Hart District who are struggling with their sexuality. That are struggling with homelessness, that are struggling with a lot of the things that he gives short shrift to, or that he blatantly makes disparaging remarks. And for a child to hear that, as a gay child at the time, myself, to hear that, it further puts you down in the hole to say, there's something wrong with me.
Yeah.
And we have a high rate of suicide among, you know, gay and lesbian students. And any child who dies because they can't be who they are is that many children dead for no reason.
Are you a proponent for the kids going back to school right now?
We are, as, as a father of a junior high school student, I'm going to be honest with you. There are days when I'm ready for them to be back.
I'm a nine-year-old. I'm, I'm with you, man.
I, I, you know, but I don't think that we are in a place where we can call it fully safe. And I think that what's most important is that we protect our teachers, staff members, and children, to make sure that they are safe. And we need to closely monitor the health, uh, health, uh, programs and also departments to make sure that when our students return, we are doing it in a way that is controlled, that is safe, and that does support student learning. Because again, if we have a student that gets sick, and hopefully would not happen, die, that's on the watch of the school board.
Yeah.
And that's something that, how do you talk to a family member that we move too fast? And, you know, that we want to make sure that we're able to protect, because that's what we're charged to do.
That seems to me the, um, more, even regardless of whether the kids themselves can be directly affected by the COVID, they can be definitely carriers. And, uh, Joe and I were arguing back and forth in texts about this. And I kept saying, man, somebody will die. Someone will get COVID from spreading and will die. And that will be on your hands, is what, what I felt at least. And, and so to me, there's, I mean, it just seems like a no-brainer as far as it's not going back yet. But at the same time, like you, with your kids, um, there are days.
There are days. And in our household, um, we, I, my other. There are days, and in our household, um, we, I, my other son is a student in the Saugus District, so we have one, one of my sons in his room, my junior high, he's right next to me because he's had some grade issues, so I'm making sure that I'm watching him. My husband's in our bedroom, and then I'm in the den, and so all of us at one time, and, you know, we're, we're on computers and we're all doing, uh, what we have to do to, um, make sure that we can continue as best we can with learning and with our work.
Yeah, it's, uh, we're in a similar situation. My wife's teaching virtually.
Right.
My kid's learning virtually, and I'm, uh, working on the stuff I do on, on the computer at the same time, so all three of us are using the internet, and all three of us are on computers all at the same time, and it's, I don't know, it's just a really weird way of life right now.
Right, right.
I forgot about the fact that you have two adopted kids.
Yes.
Let's talk a little bit about that. You've become an advocate for, uh, for adoption and, uh,
Foster youth.
Foster youth in general. These are foster children that, uh?
They, yes, we, they were foster children first, and then we did the Foster to Adopt Kinship Program through Los Angeles DCFS.
Is that sort of like, um, trying it out to see if you guys gel?
Well, no, um, the way that, the way that the system is set up now is that when a, a child enters into the system, there's concurrent planning, so the plan is that either they could be adopted by the family or that they may return back to the biological parents. Both of our boys, uh, were, stayed with us because it was determined that the biological parents were not fit to be parents, and so they terminated the parental rights and we were then able to adopt both of our sons.
How old were they when you adopted them?
Actually, we just celebrated Connor's Gotcha Day, which is the day we use when your adoption is finalized, uh, three days ago, and that was 10 years ago, so he was, he was one, thank you, and then our other son Jude, uh, he was about one and a half. They're 16 months apart, and they are biological brothers, which is another thing that's really great about having them together.
Yeah, 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 uh, are you, you, you're, if I remember correctly, you said you're kind of an advocate now for adoption of?
Yes, um, we do, uh, my husband and I and the two boys go to kinship classes around the LA area, and we will speak to families that are looking to possibly adopt or foster, and we, um, do, you know, talks about it, you know, we talk about the ups and the downs, uh, because we did have a situation happen before our two boys came into our home where we did have a child placed with us, but a family member came forward. We had the baby for about five months, which was very hard, but
I can imagine.
We had to look at it as we were there for the child to, um, provide life and to provide a place for him to go, so we've always had that. But looping back, uh, to your question, the other thing we've done is, uh, we did a video for the Human Rights Campaign, uh, where we talked about gay adoption, uh, especially here in California and in Los Angeles County in particular. And, um, again, what, what we need to do better for our students who are foster youth, uh, because the governor, uh, the last-term governor, uh, Governor Brown in the LCAP, uh, which is, you know, of course, the, the, the way that budgets are structured with local control, um, really put a lot of in there about foster youth and what we're doing to meet their needs so that they don't term out of the system and then, right, and they end up homeless, exactly.
I, I worked at Covenant House for 12 years, which is, and, and you, I can't count how many kids came out of the foster care system that when they turned 18 and just had no place to go.
Right.
At all, and, uh, and, and not sure what, what they, you know, what they're going to do or, or, you know, or where to go or anything, so they would end up in, at Covenant House, a homeless shelter, so. Was, how, uh, you, one, one of your children was one when you adopted?
Correct.
How old is the other one?
Uh, he was about one and a half, two.
That's young, isn't it? I mean, that's pretty young.
It is pretty young. It was, uh, it was, well, they called it fast-track, which in county terms means about two, you know, one and a half to two years. Um, it's certainly not fast-tracked of what we would, you know, consider that generally to be, but, um, they knew that they were in a stable home. Also, when you place siblings together, from what we could understand, it's about keeping the siblings together. Because, uh, if one sibling's rights with the parents have been terminated, most likely they're not going to, um, unify the child because they don't want to separate the siblings.
I think, I think the stigma that exists with a lot of foster care youth is that, that they're already, for lack of a better way to describe it, people perceive them at least as being broken already, you know what I mean? Coming from hard homes and, um, and so I, and, and that the average age is usually going to be a teenager or a teeny old that's already kind of established, they've matured enough to where they're kind of their own individual, and you can't really have an effect on, you know, their, their growth as a person. I assume you don't agree with that?
I do not, I do not. Um, you know, having been a teacher at the high school level, which, uh, is where my, uh, heart and soul was with, you know, and seeing students come through with all kinds of different experiences. Are you familiar with the pottery that is done in Japan where they break a bowl and they put it back together?
Uh, no, but I guess you're about to tell me about it.
I, I am. Um, what they do is they purposely break a bowl, and then they put it back together, and they put gold in the, where the cracks are, and they bring it back together. And it's a form of artistry in pottery in Japan where the broken piece is better than what it was as a whole. And it's about what you bring to, uh, the experience or to the reconstruction that matters. And I think it's the same thing with our, with our children. It, it's what we do, that, yes, they are, many of them have had situations that are so horrific that we can't even imagine, but we have to understand, they have defenses up. Anyone would. It's, it's human behavior. But we have to show them that someone loves them and cares for them in order to help them reach their fullest potential because everyone has the ability to be successful. And as O. Henry once said, another reference here to English, "Everyone is worth knowing." And so we have to remember that.
I like that, I like that. Um, well, okay, it, it is time for Ryan's question.
Okay.
And Ryan asked.
Hey, James, what are your big plans for the school district?
The most important thing that I want to do is I want to expand the curriculum to include multicultural, multi-ethnic, multi, uh, ways of accessing information. I think that we need to expand not just our English curriculum to include a variety of different authors of experiences, races and ethnicities, but we also need to look at how we present history, presenting it from multiple sides. How do we, uh, showcase, uh, people of color, women, scientists, and, and show their contributions to what has taken place in, uh, the world of science, and the same thing in mathematics? And then the other thing that I want to see along with that is expanding this to include our arts programs, our electives. I think we need more arts, more languages. Uh, right now, we have only two or three languages that are offered. Expanding that so that students have a way to access many different, um, courses that they feel would give them an understanding of the world that's important to them.
Okay, the, um, when you talk about multicultural, I think that's great. Um, let me ask you kind of a off, I don't know, I, I mean, should, should Huck Finn be in the library? Should it be taught?
I've taught Huck Finn a number of times. It's all in the way, in the context in which it's presented. I think there's great charge with certain texts that teachers are charged to have in their, in their library or, you know, within access to curriculum. Another one that comes to mind is To Kill a Mockingbird, again. You know, looking at the way that it's, uh, it's presented to students, I think is so important, and how you help them to understand possibly the world in which it was written. You know, what's interesting is that Mark Twain never intended Huck Finn to be read as an adult novel. It was actually a children's story, and, um, again, looking at it through that vein of what did the author intend, not what I think is intended. Do I think it should be in libraries? Yes, I do not believe in censoring books. I do not believe banning books. I do think that children have the right to select and read what they.
Well, I, I'm not saying, and, 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 you know, I think Huck Finn's a great book, but I, should, it, it's not an issue of, preventing the child from reading the book. It's an issue of should it be in a library, a school library, should it be taught as part of the curriculum itself, you know, you do see what I'm saying?
Right, I do, but I think that it's why are you including it? If you're including it because you feel that it is the cultural experience that all American students should have, I would disagree with that, because I think that we, you don't, it, it's not the work of literature that provides the perspective on human existence. It's whatever speaks to someone, but if you're telling me that it has to be part of the required curriculum just because it's been for eons, I find that to be a weak argument.
Okay, uh, Catcher in the Rye, same thing, the same argument?
Yes, uh, again, you're talking about books I've all taught. Although, I, I would say that Catcher in the Rye tends to be one that teenagers gravitate to because it is an experience with Holden Caulfield that they have had themselves. But, again, I did not have the issues that I know have come up in the past with the way that it's, uh, taught. I mean, you can look at Shakespeare plays, and they are riddled with a lot of very adult themes and adult imagery. Uh, but again, some people say, well, it's Shakespeare, so, you know, ignore it.
A lot of people say Shakespeare's a fad, but I think he's a little bit better than that, so. And, and in all seriousness, though, I agree with you because you look at a lot of what Shakespeare was talking about, and, you know, I mean, you, just there, like you were saying, a lot of adult themes, you know, Shylock with the, with the, the, the soliloquy he does about not a Jew hands and things like that, or, um, uh, Taming of the True, you know, there's a certain kind of, um, appreciation for, uh, women's liberation in a certain sense, of women's rights and stuff that, 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 really, for most writing at that time period was unprecedented, you know? I don't know why I'm going for that. Trying to pretend like I actually earned that.
Well, you know, talking about literature, I mean, we, we could sit and talk about this for hours, I love that.
Shakespeare in Love, do you, did you find that accurate?
Shakespeare in Love, uh, the part about women, uh, roles being played by men, that was accurate, yes.
That's about it, right?
Queen Elizabeth the First coming to a theater, that would not have happened.
I thought it was, it was at Marlowe, I think it was, that he was, uh,
Yes.
It was, you know, the fact that they got that in there was.
Right, exactly.
Reference in a 20-year-old movie. Um, anyway, um, okay, so let's have some fun. First question for you is, uh, first concert you went to?
Duran Duran, 1984.
Really?
Yes.
All right, uh, what is, uh, what's your favorite band now?
My favorite band now, I would have to say is probably Coldplay.
Coldplay?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm not a fan, not a fan. Um, and, uh, let's see, uh, favorite movie?
Favorite movie is, oh, that's a tough one. I, classical or modern?
Modern.
Modern. Modern, probably would say, um, The Hours.
The Hours, okay.
Meryl Streep.
Just for the sake of argument, classical, what's?
Classical film would be Psycho.
Psycho, really?
Yes.
Why Psycho?
Uh, the, just the thriller, the, the, the imagery, the camera details, it's, it was so advanced for its time, and Hitchcock was brilliant when he put it together.
To kill off Janet Leigh in the first 20 minutes when you assume she is the star of the film was just.
Unheard of.
Yeah, and, and most people don't know, I mean, like, they know enough of the film already, like the spoiler of it, they, they don't know that that was like not what anybody, the last thing anybody expected was for the lead actors to die in the first 20 minutes of the film. And I'm spoiling it for anybody that hasn't seen it now, so I just realized that. Do you consider yourself a hunter or a gatherer?
A gatherer.
A gatherer, why?
Because I oftentimes like to be the one to work with others, to pull things together, and try to make sense out of what's been left.
Star Wars or Star Trek?
Star Wars.
Really?
Absolutely. Empire Strikes Back, best one.
So good. Uh, Marvel versus DC?
Hmm, I have to say Marvel. Got to go with my Disney.
That's right, uh, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for the Mickey Mouse, Iron Man crossover.
Right, right, well, we're waiting for the new Epcot ride, you know, the Marvel comics that they've done.
Oh, I know, well, I, you know, Disneyland shut down before I got to go to Star Wars Land.
Oh, oh, that was a good one.
Have you been?
Yes, yes.
Pretty amazing?
It is very amazing. Um, I want, the one that I really want to see that we haven't seen is the one in Florida, because that one is just, you know, much, on a much more grand scale, but, uh, I thought that it was done very, very well. The theming, uh, I, a lot of attention to detail that was really great to see.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, and then, do you have a joke for us?
I do.
Okay, wait, I've, I've got, give me your elevator pitch of why somebody should, uh, vote for you. 60 seconds, and go.
As an educator for 20 years and also as a parent, I feel that I have the resources and the skills necessary to know what students need, what families need, and also what staff members need in order to see that all students are successful. We've had a lot of changes in Santa Clarita over the past 10 years, and we need a board that keeps up with Santa Clarita of 2020, not the Santa Clarita of 1997. And what I want to do is to bring those experiences, to bring my own unique, uh, seeing what's taken place in education in the trenches, but also some of the things that I've seen at the state level, and bring it to the board so that we make sure that families, students, staff, and the community see how we're educating all children to see that they are successful in our valley.
All right, that was great. Um, now, give me your joke.
Why was the teacher cross-eyed?
I don't know why.
Because she couldn't control her pupils.
Dun, dun, there you go, beautiful, beautiful. Um, well, James, I, I appreciate you coming on the show.
Thank you.
Wish you much luck in the election. How long has Steve Sturgeon been in that position?
Uh, he has been, I believe, 21 years.
21 years?
21 years, yes, sir.
Long time to be on a board.
It is, and, you know, understand, I think, uh, I've always had positive interactions with Mr. Sturgeon when I was, uh, in the Heart District. And I think that he's a very great person. But I do think that, um, you know, there's, there's separations of time within terms of education, teaching, and then also even having children in the district, as you know, having young children, that I think really needs to guide your understanding of what's best.
It, it does seem like, almost like it should be a prerequisite almost, that you have kids in the district that, that are actually attending the school.
Right.
But, uh, all right, well, I wish you much luck in the election.
Thank you.
Vote November 3rd, District Area 4.
Area 4.
And James Webb for Heart School Board.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. We hope you guys enjoyed the talk.
You've been listening to The Talk of Santa Clarita. Listen to us on iTunes, SoundCloud.com, YouTube, and Stitcher. Blowing a life event getting in the way, a new podcast is available every Tuesday. Questions, comments, and show ideas can be sent to thetalkofsantacarita@gmail.com. You can also call or text us at 661-505-8672. That's 661-505-8672. Follow us on Twitter at TheTalkOfSC or on Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube at The Talk of Santa Clarita. You can also visit our website by going to www.thetalkofsantacarita.com. This has been a production of Radio Free Santa Clarita Incorporated, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. To donate, go to radiofreesantacarita.org/donate. Radio Free Santa Clarita, on the net and on the air, and we're very much aware.